Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds Sr., and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
Gracious God, as we enter into this season of Thanksgiving, we take this moment to say thank you for allowing our city, one of the greatest city in the Commonwealth, to roll on a little while longer. We thank you, Lord, for the men and women in all positions of our Commonwealth. Lord, enjoy the thankfulness of this being a great place. Now be with us as we do the business of the city, that our minds will be clear and our voices will be right. We thank you in advance for that, for us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically. Madam Clerk?
Seven members of City Council present.
All right, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting October 27, 2014, a call meeting October 28, 2014, and a call meeting of November the 10th, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
There you go.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. At this time, Mr. John Rowe.
Thank you, Debra. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my very distinct pleasure to invite our Police Chief Ed Hargis and Officer Jeff Barber to the lectern. And as they come forward, I want to introduce to all of Portsmouth, the top cop for 2014 And I'd like to call on Chief Hargis to introduce Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Mayor, council members, good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to introduce Officer Jeff Barber. He is our, not only Portsmouth top cop, but he was also, three weeks ago, nominated and received the award of Hampton Roads Top Cop. He's a six-year veteran of the Police Department. There's a whole list here, I got to think about this. He's assigned to Uniform Patrol, he's a field training officer, so he trains new officers. He's a field evidence technician, so he processes crime scenes. He's a gang specialist, and on top of that, he just recently joined our SWAT team. So he keeps adding extra and extra collateral duties. Jeff, when he's out there, is a very tenacious officer with everything he does. He just doesn't go and take the report. He interviews victims, witnesses, and he finds a suspect a majority of the time. In fact, riding up in the elevator tonight, he was telling me how he apprehended a individual this past Saturday night with a shotgun and a Samurai sword, happened to be walking around. So he just continues to mount up the arrests. It's because of all his efforts that he does out there on the street and trains our new officers and doing a great job at that, that he was nominated by the executive staff of the Police Department for Portsmouth Top Cop. And then the Crime Line Awards Committee then takes the 16 local top cops, and they pick one to be the Hampton Roads Top Cop. And this year, Jeff Barber was nominated and selected to be the Hampton Roads Top Cop. So that happened three weeks ago.
Well done.
He does a great job, and I want to introduce Jeff Barber to you.
Well done, Jeff.
Thank you very much for having me.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Chief, for all your kind words. Fortunately for officers, you know, we just look for a nice little "add-a-boy," you know, email, and this is almost overwhelming, almost.
Maybe a raise every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah, you know, just something. So I just want to say thank you for your appreciation, and, you know, we just go out there and we work and we do our jobs, and it's nice when people recognize that when we do our jobs well. And I work with a great bunch of guys, you know, it's not just an individual effort, it is a team effort, and I think I work with the best team out there with the group of guys that I work with. So thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you. Congratulations.[329.27][329.27](applause)
Isn't this great?
Absolutely.
I mean, this is the epitome of professionalism right here and teamwork.
That's right.
I mean, the comments that he made, I mean, just how good is that?
That's right.
Teamwork, I've worked with the best, and the best of the best right here.
That's right. Good job. All right. All right, thank you, sir.[352.03][352.03](applause) Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light, and at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 14-441, Public Hearing on Use Permit, Rezoning, and Street Closure Applications. Item A, U.P. 1415 Downtown, Request of Loray Tucker for a Use Permit to Construct a 7-Eleven Convenience Store with Gasoline Sales on the Northeast Corner of Effingham Street and Lincoln Street, also referenced as 1811 Effingham Street. The property is owned by the City of Portsmouth Economic Development Authority and is designated in a mixed-use employment area on the future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan. Vision principle: robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and Mr. Steve Romine is available if counsel has questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council?
Morning.
This is a request for a use permit for a piece of property that you approved as a rezoning back in October. It is the piece of property at the intersection of Lincoln and Effingham, essentially from the fire station south to Lincoln. In that rezoning, also a part of that was a Dollar General store. Before you tonight is the 7-Eleven piece of the redevelopment of that property, which does require a use permit under the zoning ordinance.
I thought there was a Taco Bell as well.
Well, there's a third site there that, at one point, Taco Bell was looking at and is still available at this point. So, and that was the third parcel that faces Lincoln.
Right.
Correct? On your right is the zoning map, which has yet to be changed to reflect your action on October, but essentially, the dark brown color is the area that was rezoned general mixed use. On the left is a photograph of the property itself. Again, to the north, you have the fire station, and essentially, this is taken from Henry Street, which you closed earlier this year, and the Dollar General store would be between the street that you see and the fire station. There are some residential areas in the vicinity of this property. There are residences across the street, all across Effingham, as well as across south of Lincoln. The top photo shows those houses south of Lincoln, and the bottom photo shows the residences along Effingham. This is a very generalized concept plan for the development of the site. First off, I should point out that the building will face Effingham with the side of the building facing Lincoln. This particular drawing is actually a drawing of how they're going to get their fuel trucks in and out of the property, making sure that they can make the turning movements. If you remember, this was part of the, this property is part of the ABEX Superfund Site, and as part of the rezoning, there was a condition that they comply with the city ordinance and obtain all the necessary permits from the Department of Engineering. So really, that should not be an issue at this point. The vacant lot is the one to the right that you mentioned, Mayor Wright, that's still These are elevations of the building they're proposing to build. Across the top is the fuel islands and canopy. The front of the building is at the lower right-hand corner of the elevations. You have copies of these in your packet. It's essentially a predominantly brick building, a little more upscale than your typical 7-Eleven, certainly the historical 7-Elevens that are around the region. One of the requirements we have is a glazing or window requirement, and so this elevation was included to demonstrate that they comply with that elevation. And then the final photo is, a photo of the site again, and keep in mind that the site is currently being used on a temporary basis as a lay-down yard for the construction of the downtown utilities projects on the south side of High Street. The Planning Commission recommended this item at their meeting with a unanimous vote of 5-0, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Ms. Meeks?
Tonight, we're changing in the rezoning, the frosting or glazing.
The glazing.
Will this applicant be able to come back and get changed if he likes?
They have, as a condition that's listed in your packet, they have agreed to build it according to these elevations.
Okay.
So we would hold them to the double glazing standard.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else? All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U.P. 1415. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item U.P. 1415. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, 7-0.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. At the request of the applicant, I am going to request that the council defer consideration of the following items that were scheduled to be heard this evening until our next scheduled meeting on December 9, 2014. Item Z 1404, item U.P. 1413, and item S 1403.
Okay. Is there a second?
We have a motion and a second.
Very good.
And that would be to defer this item to December the 9.
At the request of the applicant.
At the request of the applicant.
Yes. Thank you.
You're voting electronically. This deferral has been approved, 7-0.
Okay.
Unfinished Business 14-407 Code Amendment, CA 1401, Citywide. Proposed amendments to the City of Portsmouth zoning ordinance address a number of minor technical changes to include, but are not limited to, allowing heavy industrial uses with use permit where certain heavy industrial uses were prohibited, creating a staff committee to make recommendations on proposed building and site designs to the zoning administrator, creating alternative options for new commercial developments to provide windows on the corner lots, allowing microbreweries as now required by the Code of Virginia, creating a temporary use permit for outdoor gatherings, prohibiting the storage of construction equipment on residential lots, and to allow by right massage therapy, tattoo parlors, and family daycare homes with certain requirements. Deferred from the October 28, 2014 City Council Meeting, vision principle: efficient response of government, electronic roll call, and I have registered speakers.
Okay.
And our first speaker is Mr. Roger Cornet.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council. I'd like to bring some things to your attention concerning this zoning code. We've got quite a few average people making a living in the City of Portsmouth doing landscape work that uses ditch witch that you dig a trench with to put cable in, or a tractor to landscape a yard, maybe a stump grinder or a tractor to landscape it with. If you, I think, I feel if you pass a zoning code to keep these people from making a living with this equipment, you're going to deny them a right to make a living doing this. So if you, I think if you pass the zoning code, it's going to interfere with their livelihood, you're going to run them out of the City of Portsmouth. I've got some equipment. I've got a yard, three-acre lot. This equipment doesn't interfere with neighbors. I use it for my personal use, maintaining some properties I have, business property. I don't feel like I should be, have to move this equipment if it's not interfering with my neighbors. Anybody that got common sense should not impose on a neighbor with this type of equipment. But you shouldn't, I don't, I don't think you should penalize the City of Portsmouth for 40 or 50 percent of the people that does this for a living because one or two people it does not do right or have common sense with this neighbor. I think if somebody's going to move into the City of Portsmouth and they find out a zoning code won't allow them to make a living in their livelihood or whatever they do, even though if a lot is secluded, back in, where I live, we've got lots, two- and three-acre lots, at least though acre lots. Those people won't come into City of Portsmouth if they say, "Well, I can't bring a tractor in here," or "Put it back here where it's not bothering nobody." If they can't make a living, then they're going to go somewhere else. So I don't think you should jump a gun and pass a zoning code tonight that could interfere with a lot of people's livelihood. I think you should just take this thing and study it a little bit, and think about it before you do something that's going to be on the book for a long time to come. You can't go back and change it once you get it on the book. Anyway, I asked you not to, I asked you to oppose this zoning code, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. Just for your information, that issue was brought up in the work session yesterday, and it was clearly identified by staff that the landscaping equipment was not the issue, it was the construction equipment, and I believe they were clear with that, and I think we were all satisfied with the definition, so, yeah. And so we appreciate your comment, but what you're describing, landscaping equipment, does not fall into that category. Is that correct, staff? We shaking your head?
I've got, I've got something to say if you don't mind.
No, sir, I just want to, no, sir, I want to know what you got. We heard you, you're loud and clear, and the landscape equipment, does that fall into that? Thank you, sir, and good night. Madam Clerk? Oh, Mr. Moody? Did you have a comment or something to add to that?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Baldwin, is he out in the audience? Yes, I see him there. If he could come to the lectern.
Good evening, Mr. Baldwin.
To Mr. Cornet's point, and it's clear, we've talked about landscaping equipment. Obviously, landscaping equipment can also be used as construction equipment. How are we going to define that?
Well, first of all, the issue related to tractors, we just speak to that. There was no indication or interest in this regulation in regulating tractors. So that type of landscaping equipment, what we were talking about is really heavy construction equipment, and the examples we were giving you last night, which would be what we're looking at in this code, would be things such as backhoes, bulldozers, excavators and graders, big dirt, earth-moving type equipment that would not necessarily be a good neighbor to most residential lots in the City of Portsmouth.
And I think even the truck restriction was multi-axle, more than two axles.
Right, and that is already on the books.
Which is tandem truck.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. That does clarify, hopefully got even a better understanding of it, Mr. Cornet, as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Benny Ragland.
Good evening, Mayor Wright.
Hi, Ms. Cornet.
Council members, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. White. I'm sure you all know what I'm speaking about tonight, anyway. This, the proposal amendments that you have on there, it seems like it's one thing, but yet there's a bunch of things thrown in together. I know it says in, at the beginning, that they're to allow heavy industrial equipment in residential areas, it's not there now, that they're not allowed there now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I saw one person shake their head, y'all. Then you get down to where you don't want it in residential areas. Now, from what I understand, this has to do with ERC, the way that they're parking their, I guess their vehicles, their construction equipment or what. But Mr. Baldwin, from what I have been told by a few people, is the brainstorm of this. Why can't you do something with the way ERC and their contractors do their stuff? Why? I mean, it seems to me, just reading it, that you're going to help one group with the big, heavy industrial equipment, and you're going to hurt the little guy who, yeah, he may have to have with a dump truck, which that's fine, that's on the books now, they can have that, that was put on there a number of years ago. He may have to have, you can get different backhoes, bobcats, small things, and he may have to have him in some of his landscaping business. Well, is what you're proposing, is that going to stop him from having his little bobcat? That's a construction equipment. If you want to do it, a tractor is construction equipment. So where are the lines drawn? I don't quite understand it. It doesn't appear to be very clear in the amendment as written. I mean, in this one thing, the proposed amendment changes, you've got microbreweries, you've got tattoo parlors, you've got massage therapy, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Seems like that's an awful lot of things to be thrown into one amendment. Maybe I'm just not looking at it the way you all are, but I'm looking at it, and I've talked to other people and, who have businesses, and they've already had one this evening that said, "Well, if we get to where I can't have what little bit I have for my business," he said, "I'm just not going to have any choice," he said, "paying my taxes to Portsmouth," which are the highest in the area on real estate. He said, "Why should I bother to do that if I can't use my property that I pay taxes on? Why should I continue to pay Portsmouth taxes? Why should I ride, you know, stay here?" And if you will look around, I don't know how many of you all get out and ride the neighborhoods, but if you'll look, there are houses after house after house after house for sale, and I can name quite a few of them who have already found them a place in Suffolk or Chesapeake because they feel like they're being shafted in Portsmouth. And you get a whole lot of things taken out in Portsmouth, you know, people losing their businesses. That's just going to add to the huge segment of, I guess, I don't want to say welfare, that's not the right, public assistance, I guess. But I just, I haven't figured out y'all's reasoning yet. But anyway, I don't think these proposed zoning amendments, as written for all of them, are going to be that helpful for the City of Portsmouth. And I really think you all should go back to the drawing board, take Mr. Baldwin with you, and whoever else has been brainstorming this. Talk to the citizens. You all are not the everyday John Doe out here who has to do a roof, and maybe the only place he has to do some of his equipment is in his backyard. Well, let the people, the neighbors, if it's bothering the neighbors, let the neighbors make a formal complaint instead of running behind mama's dress tail. Anyway, that's just my thing. I think you should be helpful to the citizens of Portsmouth, and I ask you to say no to this amendment, and hope you all have a fantastic Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much turkey.
Thank you, Ms. Cornet. Like I mentioned to your husband, that is not the intent of what we're trying to do here, and I think that the language is very clear that we're not going to affect those small people doing those types of things, but...
I hope they're, I hope it's not, because you're going to see Portsmouth is going to go backwards instead of forward, and we...
The brainchild over there is not going to let that happen to Portsmouth. Oh, your brainchild, okay. Ms. Simmons?
If they do, they ought to...
Ms. Simmons?
Forget paying him.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to clarify that, particularly for the public looking at the agenda, you're looking at a paragraph of zoning amendments, which, Ms. Cornet, you're putting together, you know, tattoo parlors and microbreweries and industrial uses of property. This is actually a document this big with 28 zoning amendments. That's just a paragraph or an item to vote on.
Right.
Don't confuse that with what this really is.
Well, I have no idea what all...
It's 28 items. You can drill down and read through it.
Good point.
So I think, and you also made a comment about, you know, dealing with ERC and their violations, if there are some. We can't make a law for ERC and a different law for the Cornettos. When we have a law, it has to apply equally to everyone. So that, I just wanted to clarify that, too.
Okay, that's a very good point. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
They're screwing everybody else, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
That's a good segue, screwing everybody. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah. I don't know if I like that segue or not, Mayor. It was mentioned, and my question again, and you don't, well, I guess you do need to come, Bob, because everybody needs to hear you answer. It's been mentioned acreage, and there are a few places, residential places, and Thelmar Lane is one of them. There's some very large parcels of residential property there, and obviously, somebody having something in the backyard on three acres, you probably wouldn't notice it, whereas if they're on a standard residential lot of a quarter of acre... of acre, that, that's going to be high profile. So, does, does this zoning change make any difference between lot sizes?
Uh, no, it does not. And one reason we just mentioned is because while there are few lots, if you look at the city of Portsmouth as a whole, that have larger, you know, larger acreages, an acre, two or three, by and large, we have much smaller lots, lots down with 35-foot lot widths today, and it's simply the historic development pattern in the city just not, does not, uh, it's not similar to Chesapeake or Suffolk, and where people are out on acre and larger lots. We have people in much smaller suburban lots, and large construction equipment is simply not, in our opinion, a compatible neighbor in a residential setting. Uh, I will mention, as far as the Cornettes are concerned, you have to remember what people are doing today, if it's legally established, is vested, that does not affect them, this is not retroactive, we don't go and file some sort of violation against someone who already has equipment out there. That would, this is really going to be applied in when who was trying to, you know, creating this kind of a violation in the, in the future. So anybody who's already out there with equipment on some of these larger lots, such as, such as them, they would have vested rights with their equipment.
But if I purchased, after this is adopted, if I purchased...
Vested rights go with the property.
A three-acre lot, okay, that had equipment on it, would I still be able to put equipment on it?
You would be allowed the equipment that was there when you purchased it. What gets vested at the point of adoption of the code is allowed, ownership is irrelevant, it goes with the land. The vested rights of the, of the equipment would go with the property. So, that's, um, pretty standard practice. It would really be applicable to, from here forward, as far as this new restriction on construction equipment.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
Very good.
And I think he's, further clarifications are needed.
Yeah, that's right.
So people have a comfort level that, uh...
Mr. Meeks?
Example, like if he has his backhoe now, that's fine, but if he goes out and buys a new excavator, that would be the violation.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, sir. Final speaker is Mr. Mark Adotikichowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. Let me start by saying happy Thanksgiving to you and the hard-working people of the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Which, which is a walkable and bikeable city, certifiably.
Bronze.
A matter of... You know, we're in the top three. Let me, uh, let me hark back to my concerns that I expressed at your last meeting. Um, I'm, I see that there is some new language that the manager inserted into a memo. It doesn't get to the core of my complaint, my concern about the family daycare homes. I still am uneasy with the ability for these types of enterprises to pop up in neighborhoods without going through a formal approval process. When people buy homes, if, if their property is near a master jet base, or it's near a waste-to-energy incinerator, these are pre-existing uses. If their property is in a flood zone, these are pre-existing conditions. Somebody who is doing careful research before buying a property knows what sort of, what sort of environment he or she is moving into. But this change in the ordinance means that no matter how careful you've been in making your choice, something can happen that you didn't intend. You didn't want to be in the midst of a business zone, you want to be in a residential area. And the distinction blurs when you're dealing with something like daycare. One child at a grandparent's house is not the same as six to 12 children who are taken in as a profit-making enterprise. There are disturbances, potential disturbances to your quiet enjoyment of your property. So, I don't feel there are enough safeguards in what you're proposing for people to feel good about their choices. Again, I'm going to talk about the housing bust. There are properties that are available for sale in a number of neighborhoods at prices significantly lower than what neighbors paid for their houses, which means somebody could come in and take this on as a commercial investment, buying up a house that has sat on the market too long, and pretty soon, the character of your neighborhood changes. Established neighborhoods of longstanding can become enterprise zones. That's not what I had in mind when I bought my house. I don't think that many people, if they knew this were a prospect, would be comfortable either. And my last point, which I'll make briefly on another subject, is I see the same sorts of issues with the change in the ability to rent out spaces to non-family members in existing homes. These are cause for concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
You finished walking the halls?
I'm working on it, sir. Okay. There are no additional speakers on this item, and you all had the public hearing at your last meeting, so this isn't a public hearing. Wait, 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 wait. We going to do this smoothly. Based on the memo from the city manager, he laid out steps for the approval of this item, based on your previous conversations. And I'm going to assist you, because I'm not sure who has that memo. The very first, um, one that he had was to delete the proposed bed and breakfast restriction, item number 17, and the proposed allowance to receive development application on properties with delinquent taxes, item number 11. That's number one, so we want to deal with that one first.
Do each one?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have three.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Simmons, we have a motion.
Second.
Councilman Edmonds, second, and you're going to vote electronically on this.
Very good.
This item is approved 7-0. Okay, the second is to approve an amendment, an amended proposal for family daycare homes, item number 10, to allow administrative approval with notification to neighbors and a use permit if there is opposition raised.
Correct.
We have a motion.
Second.
We're in need of a second. We have a second, Councilman Chair, Vice Mayor Chair, and you're voting electronically. This item is approved 6-1. The final motion is to approve the revised amendment package, which includes all the items you all just approved. So, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Edmonds, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved 6-1. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, very good. City managers report.
City managers report, 14-442, adoption of an ordinance appropriating in the FY 2014-15 asset forfeiture fund, the sum of $6,937 received from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for use by the Commonwealth's attorney to supplement salaries, train office staff, and purchase equipment for office supplies. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. All right, 14-443, adoption of an ordinance accepting a rescue squad assistance fund grant in the amount of $33,100 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2015 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services to purchase a hydraulic lift system for patient stretchers. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-444, adoption of an ordinance accepting juvenile accountability block grant funds in the amount of $27,778 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Juvenile Court Services Unit to support the Violation Intervention Program. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-445, adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending sections 22-561 and 22-575 thereof to regulate back-end parking in designated areas. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered I have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-446, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Biltmore Baptist Church for use of the athletic field at 3120 Elliott Avenue. Vision principle, neighborhoods, and sense of community, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-447, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a railroad agreement between the Commonwealth of Virginia, the city of Portsmouth, and the Norfolk Portsmouth Belt Line Railroad Company for the Turnpike Road Whining Project. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-448, adoption of a resolution committing $225,000 in funds appropriated in the FY 2014-15 Capital Improvements Fund as matching funds for a $900,000 grant from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the rail-to-trail conversion of the former Commonwealth Railway property in Churchland. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New Business, 14-449, boards and commissions, Vice Mayor Chair.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make the following nominations for boards and commissions. For reappointment to the Historical Preservation Commission, Theodore Rhodes. For appointment to the Community Policy and Management Team, Rosalind Osgood. Behavior Healthcare Advisory Board Commission, Carl Seward. Board of Building Zoning Appeals, Michelle Burton. Downtown Design Committee, Tamneshia Anthony, and Crystal Kamadis. To the Library Board, Kimberly Bright. To Museums and Fine Arts Commission, Lawrence Owens and Donna Rogers. To the Social Service Advisory Commission, Angelina Allen and Amicia Hatcher. That ends the nominations.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The boards and commissions are adopted 7-0. 14-450, items submitted by council members.
Okay. Let me, first of all, I've got a couple of items, but first of all, I want to thank all of the citizens of Portsmouth who came out and participated in the Grand Illumination Parade that we had this past Saturday. It was well-attended, it was a very good parade, I think we had almost 100 units in the parade, and, uh, it was well-done. I want to also thank all of our city employees who had anything with, doing with remodeling and redesigning our float, it was outstanding. Uh, it just does your heart well when you see all of our folks working together. We're over in the city of Norfolk, representing Portsmouth, and everybody working hand-in-hand, and all of the other Portsmouth components that were in the parade. I believe I see Norcom Band was there, I think Wilson Band was there, um, we had a couple other Portsmouth pieces there as well, but, so anyway, thank everybody for coming out and for participating there. And on the same night, after the parade, we were freezing, we left there, and we came over to the Children's Museum, because we had 800 Girl Scouts that were over the Children's Museum, the Colonial Coast Council were there, and they were doing their cookie kickoff. And, um, so come January, all of you cookie buyers with Girl Scout cookies, have your purses ready. There is a new kid on the block this year, a new cookie, and it's called Ra-Ra Raisin. And so the Ra-Ra Raisins were on display at the Children's Museum, and everybody got a taste. So, um, again, we're very proud of our Girl Scouts and all of the kids. Uh, no, I, I recommended a healthy Portsmouth cookie for next year, and they asked me to put it in the suggestion box, so, uh, we'll see where that goes. And so, anyway, and lastly, I want to thank the Independence Center for presenting the city of Portsmouth with this award, Outstanding City Award. And for most of you that don't know, the Independence Center is located on East Virginia Beach Boulevard in Norfolk, and, uh, they work with our, um, disabled brothers and sisters with housing, employment, and all of those types of things. And this year, they had their annual meeting at the, um, Sports Hall of Fame, and we were proud to host them here in Portsmouth, and the city of Portsmouth won the Outstanding City Award, and I want to read this in its entirety, because it encompasses about four or five of our agencies that work together each year to make this possible, the Redevelopment Housing Authority, Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium, the Portsmouth Area Resource Coalition, our Behavior Health Services, and as well as the others. And so I'll read this, because I actually was surprised that we were receiving this city award, and I actually came to give greetings and welcome into the city of Portsmouth, and for hosting their event here. So, the Independence Center Award recipients, Outstanding City Award. This award is presented to a local city that has been supportive of the disability community and the mission of the independent sitter, senator. The city that receives this award has demonstrated leadership in providing opportunities for persons with disabilities, and a willingness to involve the disability community in the service and the programs offered by the... service and the programs offered by the city. This year's recipient winner is the city of Portsmouth for supporting the efforts of people with disabilities by maintaining a funding relationship with the Independence Center since 1983, as have the other communities in South Hampton Roads. And during the past year, the Independence Center provided 853 Portsmouth residents with direct services to support independence. That's quite an accomplishment. The Portsmouth Department of Social Services and Health responded to the request for screening and eligibility for Medicaid long-term care support so that residents could avoid placement in nursing facilities and other institutions. The Portsmouth Public Schools, I left them out, Portsmouth Public Schools helped with workshops in collaboration with the Independence Center to provide detailed information to students and their families about supportive services and transitions. The Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium brought together homeless services and community service providers to address the needs of homeless individuals with disabilities. And the Portsmouth Area Resource Coalition partnered with the Independence Center to provide home funding, tenant-based rental assistance for people with disabilities, thus preventing the homeless due to the lack of adequate financial resources. Home funds were used to assist a person with a disability to transfer from a nursing facility in Portsmouth to their own home in that same community. And then finally here, the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority has supported the incorporation of universal design features in construction of new assistant housing. The Planning Department, oh, I left them out, Planning Department, you got to shout out here, too. The Planning Department for the local five-year consolidated plan consulted with the Independence Center to obtain data about housing needs for Portsmouth residents with disabilities. And then they ended with, these are just examples of the collaboration between the Independent Senator and the city of Portsmouth in these last several years, in this last year. So, congratulations. I was honored to receive this award on behalf of all of these organizations that work together to help our disabled brothers and sisters become independent. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's holiday time, so I want to talk about snow. I can guarantee you that it is going to snow in Portsmouth on Friday and Saturday, beginning this weekend until Christmas. At 5:30, 6:30, and 7:30 p.m., it will snow outside the Children's Museum at 221 High Street, and there will be a light show. And as part of all of our holiday festivities, it will be snowing at the Children's Museum this coming weekend also. The Coleman Collection Little Figures open at the Portsmouth Art and Cultural Center, or known as the 1846 Courthouse at Hyatt Court. The Old Town Santa will be back there at the Art and Cultural Center. All sorts of festivities going on between the two places, beginning this Friday after Thanksgiving culminating Christmas weekend. There are little blue brochures all around town, event guides and brochures, pick them up as a handy reference guide for your extended planning. Remember that the weekend of December 12th is the Holiday Music Festival downtown, named by the American Bus Association of the United States, is one of the top 10 events in the United States. There will also be an Old Town Home Tour that's a fundraiser for the Old Town Civic League, and lots of other great stuff going on. So, definitely come down for the snow. Won't be Buffalo.
All right, well done. And, Madam Clerk, before we go on, you mentioned the Santa, this, display. There is a group, and I don't know if they're successful, I understand they may be close to being successful. Remember the old Santa Claus house out in Mid-City? There's a group trying to bring that back to Mid-City, and I think they've approached Kroger and the shopping center, and I think they're real close to making an announcement there. So, stay tuned in the future, we may have the Santa house back at Mid-City. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 14-451, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 14-452, non-agenda speakers. Our only speaker is Mrs. Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 10. The God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. Man considered as a creature must necessarily be subject to the laws of his creator. The will of man's maker is called the laws of nature. The laws of nature began to exist at the same time mankind was made and was dictated by God himself. The laws of nature are binding over all the globe, in all countries, and at all times. No human laws are of any force, if contrary to God's laws. But who will decide? When it comes to lawmaking, the nations of most of the world throughout history have been subject to the whims of uncontrollable kings, emperors, rulers, and magistrates. How can we, the good people, be protected from the autocratic authority of our rulers? Where does the source of sovereign authority lie? The founding fathers had strong convictions on this point. It is a saying that in every government, there must exist somewhere a supreme, sovereign, absolute, and uncontrollable power. But this power resides always in the body of the people, and it was, and it never was or can be delegated to one man or a few. The great Creator has never given to men a right to invest others with authority over them, unlimited either in duration or degree. James Madison declared, "The adversaries of the Constitution seems to have lost sight of the people altogether in their reasonings on this subject." These gentlemen must be reminded of their era. They must be told that the ultimate authority, wherever the derivative may be found, resides in the people alone. But even if it is acknowledged that the people are divinely endowed with the sovereign power to govern, what happens if elected or appointed officials usurp the authority of the people to impose a dictatorship or some form of abusive government on them? They will have to remain in bondage. There will not be any help for them. Why? Because what is happening in our communities are, the mayor and city council members are automatically members of national organizations like the National Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and the National Association for City Council Members. Those in the state government also have the National Governors Association, and state legislators have their national organization. The National Mayor's Conference and the National Governors Association have been leaders in a sustainable development and related policies agenda, many times working directly with the United Nations organizations to promote these policies. Other state and federal agencies, officials, including the EPA agents, air and water quality agents, HUD officials, energy officials, Commerce Department officers, are targeting our local elected officials with policy, money, regulations, reports, special planning board meetings, and conferences, which are all promoting the exact same agenda, sustainable development. These are our local officials' reality. They think government is supposed to be like this, because after all, everybody, they are dealing with, says so. Our local officials are surrounded by all these important, powerful folks. Along comes a local citizen who tells them that some guy says, "All of these programs are from the United Nations, and they are taking away our liberty." Who, they say? He says, "What? Come on, I'm not doing that, and I don't have time to talk about it. I have another meeting to go to." There you have it. This is why our elected and appointed officials have usurped the authority of the people. The United Nations have taken our place. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. On behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth, I want to wish every way, everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Good night.[1796.83][1796.83]